All right.
Okay, let's go.
All right. Let's call to order the meeting of the Nelson County Board of Education. This is our work session. It is Thursday, May the 4th, 2017 at 5:00 PM. Dr. Orr, are there any changes to the agenda?
No ma'am. It is as you see it. I'll just point out that there is one item under 5B that we will ask for you to make a decision. Talk about that when we get to it.
Okay. And then next up on the agenda is the Efficient Resource Management and Construction Update, Tim Watson. Ms. Frank.
You all know Tim Wenzel with BCD. I'm gonna run through the pay apps real quick. Depending on how you look at it, they're less exciting all the time. As you all know, the projects are about complete. This is the Early Learning Center. I've got highlighted the change order column as usual. Percentage complete, payment due, and the balance to finish. And the balance to finish on that project is $27,000. So clearly that's 98.86% complete. And as you all know, we're tying up loose ends at this minute. Staff will be meeting possibly with Tim and Tom and Stephen to tie up punch list items, to assign tasks. Some of those punch list items are district issues, some are contractor issues. We'll be working on that over the next week or two. And that project will come to a close very, very soon. Anything to add on that, Tim?
No, just to mention it before, but there's an $18,000 SIM Flex bill. But you know, that could go up. Went ahead and been building full, so you're really looking at $9,000 change. So basically just punch list items, waiting for some grass to get established. So you know, it's approved. Most of the items, I think, are exterior. Interior front of the silos are being finished off. So actually don't have any pictures this time. They're the same as last month, so.
Carla, I guess let's go to... Is this the TNHS pay app okay? This one's a little behind the other project as has been the entire process. It's about 85% complete according to the pay app. But as I think you all know, it's a little farther along than that. And we were talking this morning in executive staff. And I tried to get out there today and I couldn't. But they're starting to install chairs of the seating, which is exciting. We know that's one of the very last things to happen in there. And that project, I think, is still on pace to be completely complete by the end of this month. Tim, is that right?
Yes, that's correct. In fact, the seating, you know, it's $63,000. It'll be done by the end of next week. After that, they're installed, there's some finishing touches like some floor covering and stuff. But the seating need to be installed to actually finish around the perimeter of the seating. There's some doors that have had manufacturing delays, so they're coming in next week. So get those installed. Just a bunch of minor things on interior. Punch list on there in the actual interior space above ceiling was done. So that the seating can be installed. We don't want to get any equipment back in there. So punch list items will be anything below perimeter wise. So it's winding down quickly.
Okay. Carla, I guess we'll go to the pay, not the pay apps, the change order laws. I'm gonna let Tim. A lot of the documentation, a lot of these items, we've talked about many, many times. There's two or three for each location that Tim will... I'll let Tim talk through with you. This is the Early Learning Center.
So I think we've even talked about Tim before. But Tim, where Stephen's had got some notes, but it was a building inspector related item and some mechanical closet. He wanted some more safety devices installed to keep fire from spreading. So that's that item. The window film is an item that was in the project. And I'm not sure, I wasn't involved in the conversation, but it got removed. So there was some film on some interior glass. And then the modification of the steel rail, the last one there is, you know, a result of Eckert's or Eckert's evaluations.
Later on.
That's a lot. That's multiple items revising some grades so that there's no hard edges. Redoing the handrail and adding actually an infill panel so that a kid can't go through the railing. So we're actually waiting on Stephen's approval and we can proceed with getting those items completed.
I guess we'll go to the Thomas Nelson list.
I think we'll move down to item number five. There's an exposed edge that wouldn't be easy to finish in a typical construction. So they made a suggestion and put an aluminum corner trim on it to make it look nicer. Number six, the sprinkler pendants. If you'll notice in the pictures, we've got the sound panels up at the top. So a typical sprinkler head like these stick down from the bottom of the ceiling panel. And so they selected for a neater, cleaner look. The ones are concealed. So if there's a fire, it melts the flush panel off and the sprinkler head will drop down and extinguish the fires.
You see on that red there, you see need more information for recommendation. That was the status two days ago. The status yesterday changed to recommendation, recommended for approval. And if the paperwork's in in time, that would be an example of one that we would bring to you on the 16th for final approval. That status changed in the last 24 hours, so.
The last one is one of those that kind of got missed in coordination items. They came to do all the theatrical lighting and install projection stuff. And the screen that was specified actually calls for a front projection mount. And the one in the auditorium, the projector is on the rear of the screen. So there's a difference in the type of screen required to be able to project from the rear than the front. So that was the result of the cost of changing the type of screen. And it's a large screen. I think it's 20 feet, 30 feet wide.
Is that the cost to work or is that the cost to...?
It's a different type of, it's a different material. Labor's the same, materials, the difference in cost.
It's $1,700 more than the other one.
Than a similar one to this. Because it's gotta be, it's gotta have a transparent quality instead of a opaque quality.
Any questions on those?
On this, I kind of have a question about back at the Early Learning Center where there was, it looked like a $500 for removing the film and it said it needed more information. Can you explain that one again?
That's an architect note. I told Tim earlier that I didn't, I haven't received any questions regarding it. But it is a deduct because they didn't install the material. So it'd be a credit.
It'd be a credit. I gotcha. Okay.
So I don't know, you know, I'll talk to Stephen tomorrow and see what information he needs to be a recommended approval.
I gotcha.
And I guess we'll go through the pictures of Thomas Nelson. I think we have something there.
So that's the stage floor. Wasn't at the last meeting. I can't remember if they showed me that. It may have been being installed at the time. But so it's been installed and sanded and finished. So it's a finished product. So this is the auditorium. So if you're in there today, they started installing the seating. And a lot of that unfinished area is exposed concrete. So it'll be concealed by the seating. You know, the seats go all the way up and they actually come in this front area too. So it'll look a whole lot more complete then next week. Similar, just another angle of the same situation. It's hard to tell. In fact, I guess, you know, I was going to comment on the sprinkler heads, but you can't even tell where they're at. They're in each of the center of the light at the bottom of the apex of those sound panels. But you can't even see the circle. So whereas if it's one of these sprinkler heads, you probably see something sticking down on the bottom of the panels. But if you're over there and notice a circle, that's the sprinkler heads above it. The outside is wrapping up for the exterior side. I think the next picture shows the ramp. So there's a ramp. That's along this side of it's where the steel rail will go that was one of the change order items. So that's that drop off we talked about a long time ago. But the handrail or steel rail keeps people from walking off the side of that. And if the weather would cooperate, that would receive asphalt paving. But it keeps raining every other day. So as soon as they get some dry weather, we'll get that paved and the exterior will be complete.
Exciting.
Thank you, Tim.
Thank you.
Putting in Tim now is Mike McNair. Did I get there, Mike?
Yes, yes.
Mike is here. Last month, John Gasser was here with CMTA. And Mike is here tonight to talk about the status of the Guaranteed Energy Savings Project. Again, it's primarily at Bloomfield, but it's really throughout the district, so.
Yeah, we've actually kind of expanded from Bloomfield over to the high school. But just give you a quick synopsis of where we're at. We're 100% complete at the elementary and the middle school on the four-foot tubes. I had them release early, the fixtures. So I've set some additional Conex boxes because the rate we're moving, we're exceeding our materials. So I've got those coming for the middle, elementary, and the high school. We're moving into the can fixtures. We've got the geothermal lateral piping where we're tying into the existing well field. It's in place, it's in the ground. I've contracted with Mike King Landscaping to come out and re-landscape that area where we've dug, re-level the ball field, reinstall gravel where we've dug through over there, and reslope the ditch so we can put everything back the way it was. So he'll be starting next week once the rain lets up. We started this week in the high school Monday night. And today, when I walked out there, we've got approximately 250 lights done. So we're doing about 80 at night, but they've got some more guys. So we're gonna be moving a little quicker. So I've got their materials released. So with the middle school, I expect if I get light fixtures here soon, to be done before school's out with the lighting. And then I can get controls in there, move mechanical in. Next week, we're gonna start demoing out the boilers in the boiler room because the heating's off. Get all that piping out of the way, remove the pads. We've got the gym storage room's gonna be converted to mechanical room. So we're gonna set our pads, have everything ready. So when equipment comes in, it's gonna go directly onto the pads, nothing be stored. We'll be able to start, you know, getting everything hooked up. So we're moving at a good rate. And I have to say Kevin has been wonderful to work with, getting me that front end. Because being able to gain days is important because we can't add them at the end. So that's where we're at.
One thing in addition, you all may remember Mr. Page from his days on the board. He was adamant about maximizing the return on certain things. You might remember his concerns over just disposing of the old boiler. And I think in our contract, I know in our contract at Bloomfield, we still own the old boiler. And I know CMTA, Adam Pierce, I think, is working with Warren County, who is remodeling a school and needs a boiler. So there's a strong, there's a possibility that instead of them renting a boiler, they will buy ours from us. And we will, you know, we don't know the details on that. But there's a possibility, you know. So we have some options for disposing of that that will generate some revenue back to the district.
And the plus side to being able to get in here early, Kevin, giving us that opportunity, is we're saving you about 80% on your lighting. So having those lights in, you guys are already starting to get the savings. So it's really nice that we've been able to get in at night and do the work. And schools have been very cooperative with us and it's worked out well.
What is the anticipated completion on the...?
Well, the scheduled completion date is July 31st. So I'll tell you it's July 31st. If we come in, we're ahead of that. And you know, that's always my goal, is to try to improve the process as we go. I kind of always laugh at it. I'm retired from the tow skirt. I was a TQ facilitator. I've got an MBA in accounting. And I'm always looking to shave and cut and to move things forward. So I think we're gonna, I think we're gonna wrap up here pretty good. Critical path items are gonna be controls, make sure control wiring. But we'll be able to run equipment in hand. So we know on a, we've got a date set that everything has to be able to control from the wall. Maybe not the building operating system, but the critical path will be controlled. So that's the one thing I really need to keep my eyes on.
Under promise, over deliver.
That's it.
So the superintendent at Warren County is a Nelson County graduate.
He doesn't get a discount?
I was gonna say, hopefully we just won't raise that possibility.
We'll just sell it to him as if he's getting the discount. That way he's happy he got something.
Under promise and over deliver.
Yeah.
Listen, we are, his name's Will Clayton.
We really don't want to let loose this, but you know, for this price, we'll let it go.
Someone else was... You're in a line on the separate.
Exactly, exactly.
Thank you, Mike.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Hopefully in a couple of weeks, we've got more good news for you. Hopefully I got the pictures.
Thank you. Thank you. Good for construction? All right, then move into the tentative budget.
Tentative budget, we're, you know, this is probably what it is. It's the, there's more that goes into that, that particular version of the budget, more changes, I guess, than probably any other version. We're still in the process of working on some of those things. Some of the things, the highlights, changes is the board has talked in the last few months about an allocation of an assistant principal at Boston. We've talked about increasing recently. And I don't know that this is something that, I don't know if Dr. Orr shared this specifically with you. I know it's been an internal conversation for a while. Increasing the site, the instructional assistant allocation through the site base formula, which would impact all your elementary schools. We currently allocate those folks at four hours a day. And we're gonna recommend through this process to increase that to five hours per day, which is not everything everyone wants, but it's a step in the right direction. I think it's always better to do things gradually whenever possible. And I think the schools will be happy with that. Let's see, we've talked about some software pieces. We will, we're still contemplating, you know, how we look as far as the bottom line is concerned. I'm confident we're gonna end the year in a very positive fashion though. I think I can tell you that now. And you know, we'll be monitoring the level of retirements and the estimated higher lag and the possibility of salary changes or increases. Obviously, we'll be putting a tax, changing local revenue in there. There will also be an offsetting reduction. There is every year in SEEK. If the SEEK base is flat, we get less money every year. It's just the way it works because assessments grow. And if your assessment grows and the base is the same, the seek dollars will decrease. So we'll have some of those pieces. And that's not new. That happens virtually every year. So there's several variables that we're, we're continuing to work on. But I do, I guess overall, I'd like to tell you that I do expect, I think we're on pace to end this year in a very positive fashion. And to be able to continue doing some of the things that I think you all would like to see us do. And make a couple of changes that will impact schools positively. You know, again, the, one thing I may have mentioned, I went right over the top of it. We've also talked about adding a half a van position at an itinerant van position for the K8 schools. And that is currently in the budget to be presented to you on the 16th. Anything else you'd like to add?
Well, you and I have not talked about this specifically, but so if it's a surprise, my fault. We've seen some news over the course of the last couple of weeks about expected shortfall in state revenue for this fiscal year. Have you followed that?
I have.
Down to our impact?
I don't have any specific info to share with you at this point. I will tell you that I talked to Jay Ritter at KDE yesterday or the day before. We didn't talk about that specific issue. I know the state, one of the things the state has done recently is shore up the rainy day fund, which is very popular. It's the reason why you have, it's the reason why they have a rainy day fund. We call it contingency. It's why you have that. So when things, when you have a bad year or something happens, you're prepared for it. That's a good plan for all of us personally and these government agencies. So I don't know exactly what that would mean. I will tell you, $113 million shortfall is what they're projecting as of last night's Courier-Journal, I think. But I've not seen anything from the department yet. And generally, my experience is that if there's money in the rainy day fund to absorb those type of things, they generally try to do that versus taking money from public schools. That's why they have it. Now, what that does affect is future allocations. It reduces your contingency or the rainy day fund going forward. And they'll want to replenish that, or at least I would, before I reallocate funds in any other way. So in the end, it will have an effect on us. It will have somewhat of an effect on us, yes.
Whether it's now or later.
Whether it's now or later. Now, we are already, we're in the middle of a biennial budget that takes us through June 30th of 2018. And that rainy day fund shortage or that shortfall this year, what it will do is affect the budget that's adopted next winter when they meet in January. And that will be a part of those budget discussions. I will also tell you that, you know, there's some talk about some tax reform changes that could have an effect on the school district. And the piece I saw recently, it's not a positive effect on us. But that's only one piece. This is, you know, if you're only getting one side of the equation, there may be other pieces that do help us. But the first bit of information I saw is, it doesn't help us. It doesn't help us. It may provide relief, it generates more revenue someplace else. I haven't seen the rest of that information. Soon as I see that, I'll be sharing it with Dr. Orr. I'm sure he'll be sharing that with you. But there's a lot of information to come. And again, you know, I'm confident where we're gonna end this year. I feel real good about it. And we just want to make sure that we do make, recommend to you decisions, you know, that will continue to keep us on that path. And that's what we're gonna try to do. But feel good about things for now. Any questions about where we're at with the budget? We'll have the document obviously for you on the night of the 16th. When it comes to the AFR and the tentative and the working budget, I generally am working on that up until the time I send it to Carla on Thursday before you get it for the following Tuesday. Which is why I don't have a document to give you tonight because I'm afraid it will change. Afraid it will change, so. Any questions?
Next up, insurance selection.
This is a great example of why I don't have a document to give you, okay? We submitted, we sent out an RFP for our insurance package. And we spend over $400,000 a year on insurance in this district between student accident, workers comp, property, fleet, et cetera.
How much?
A little over $400,000. Hang on a second, I'll tell you.
How much is that?
About $450,000. That's within a dollar or two there. And we got four responses on our workers comp quote. One response was not even in the ballpark. The other three are very close to one another. And I have an insurance consultant I work with, you know, when we're spending $450,000 on insurance many, many years ago, the district contracted with an insurance consultant. This is a licensed insurance person that they represent us when it comes to things of this nature. Doesn't cost as much to employ this person. And we get good information from someone who's not trying to sell us anything. So we've been going back and forth and we've been, we've been talking quite a bit. Sent him an email just a couple of hours ago. And he is in the process of reviewing the quotes. And I expect to come back and recommend to you to stay where we're at on workers comp because the other three bids we received were all within a couple of thousand dollars of each other. And even if the current carrier's not the low carrier and you've got that relationship with them and they, and the current carrier's KIMI, which has a lot of school district business in Kentucky, we're probably gonna be recommending that you stay with them. I want to confirm that with him because again, we're not talking about any kind of substantial difference in price. And you always run the risk of an insurance company coming in, lowballing a price, and then your price changes after a year or so. There's also been instances where companies come in, they're in the state for a couple of years, and then they're out. Does that make sense to everybody? And we want to deal with people that we think are gonna be here long term. So I think student accident, we got two quotes. And the quote, the low quote is who we're with now. That's a pretty simple decision. I feel like it's gonna be relatively clear on the comp side. Now, the property and the fleet liability, we call that the package. It's a little more complicated. We got two prices. We've been with Liberty Mutual and First Insurance Group, formerly Eugene Wilson Company, as long as I've been here. We did get a quote from another carrier that is substantially less expensive. Looking now, line item by line item in the policy to compare coverages. The next step will be, if coverage is lining up, the next step would be to, what are our options when it comes to board legal representation? You know, there's a lot of issues there when you deal with your insurance company. It's a big, that's a big deal to change that. Not saying it's not an option, that's why we get prices. But we're gonna be working through that over the next week or so. And when we come back to you the night of the 16th, we'll hopefully have answers to all those questions. And I'll be in communication, obviously, with Dr. Orr. And he'll be keeping you in the loop on how things are shaping, shaken up, or shaken out, I guess is the way to say that. But we'll be working on that a lot over the next few days. Because it's hard for me to imagine the price can be as different as it is. Just so you know, the Liberty quote's about $10,000 more than it was last year, which is about a 2% to 3% increase. About what you'd expect. About what you'd expect. The other quote is 20% less. So it's, so we're just looking... Yeah, it's Commonwealth Insurance out of the, the agent is out of Louisville. And the carrier they're representing is EMC. So we're looking into those things as we speak. And again, we'll try to have a lot of good information for you on the night of the 16th so you can make a good decision.
Not that it's not legit, but it's one of those, that saying, you know, is it too good to be true in the back of your head?
Right. I mean, we'd all like to say $40,000.
Yeah, we all would, but that's a huge percentage difference there that just kind of makes you question.
Yeah. And I had some thoughts on, you know, if, and I've been working with Keith Riley, our consultant, on it. So again, we're gonna keep working on that. And we'll come back with a recommendation on the night of the 16th. And we'll try to answer, have all your questions answered. We'll be sending that packet of those recommendations on Thursday before. And if you all have questions, certainly don't hesitate to let me know. We'll try to answer those questions there. Because that is a big deal.
Do you know any of the districts that use that other venture?
That we're working on that now. I'm not sure they're in the school business, which is another, you know, so there's a lot of those things. But again, they're talking about a substantial difference in price too.
So I kind of, I would want to know things like their customer service and their payout and all those.
Is it a catch just to get you in there? We've got all those credits with the other one and yeah.
Ten cents on the bread.
So, you know, depending on the decision, the recommendation and the decision that's made that night, that changes the budget. Does that make sense?
Yes.
So there we go. So, but anyway, we'll continue to be working on that. And I'll be in touch back on the 16th in communication with Dr. Orr as we go through the process.
And the audit contract, 2006.
It's standard operating procedure. We approve the contract. We approve the contract in May each year, and as you know, I think this is the third of the three-year agreement we have with Smith and Company. And we will work with them again this year, and if you all would like for us to pursue other auditors, we can, or we can continue, we can have that conversation down the line. But our recommendation will be to approve the auditor's contract on the night of the 16th with Smith and Company.
How long they've been on audit?
I'm going to guess this will be about, this is the third of a three-year arrangement, but we were with them a couple of years. I'll have to go, I think it's about five years. Now, there are limited, there's not a ton of folks out there doing school district audits now, but there are people. There are people, and certainly we can pursue.
Yeah, but then we go back to cost, too.
Yeah.
Because their cost, I couldn't believe their cost. To me, it was very reasonable.
Yeah, we paid about $16,000 to have our auditor.
Yeah, very reasonable.
Is that it?
That's all I have.
Actually, next up, policy and procedure updates.
We'll, I will be coming back to you guys in June with the majority of our policies to review. We had some that we wanted to move forward with now for a couple of reasons. One in particular, that's preschool policy, 081114, was a requirement of our audit. It's a, I don't know, new law, but a new interpretation of the law saying about the number of adults that we have with our young ones. And so that was an audit hit, for lack of a better word. And we need to go ahead and get that, to get that clear from the audit. I'm sorry, it's the very last one. I started, I started at the back. So that's the one policy that is a new policy is the reason I went to that, and I'm sorry, I confused it by going to that first.
And to be clear, I got a little upset when the auditors raised this issue because we're in compliance, and we pay the School Boards Association to keep our policies in compliance. We, you know, our practice is in compliance, and we pay to keep our policies in compliance. The criticism that came was that we didn't have this policy in place. So we reached back to KSBA and say, wait a minute, why aren't we taking a hit on a policy that you're switching track for us? And there, and that's where I think Bob's talking about the interpretation. They said, well, that was initially a policy, but we assumed that that's part of your practice and is a part of your standing application with the Kentucky Department of Education as a part of that. So we're going to adopt the policy, ask you to adopt the policy to ensure that if the auditors come back and check to see that we're compliant, we can say yes. We have a piece of paper that says we do what we know is required and have always done. Thank you for your assistance.
Thank you.
Probably a good example, if we're in another district with a different auditor, it may or may not have also been a concern.
Yeah. And like Dr. Orr said, it's been part of our practice all along. It's just they want to see it in writing, so. And again, I apologize for skipping to that, but I just, I wanted to tell you why we're bringing a new policy to you at kind of an untimely time for it. And then the other, starting with certified personnel policy on drug and alcohol-free schools, and then following that, you have here this classified, which are basically the same, just different numbers. Dr. Orr came to me probably six or seven months ago, so obviously I haven't moved real quick on this, but put a lot of time in it and said, these policies haven't been looked at in a while, they haven't been revised. He was concerned about us specifically with our students, making sure that we are testing on a regular basis, and wanted me to look at these and see where we are aligned with our actual practice and aligned, and many of them weren't any changes since 2007, 2008. I reached out to other districts and did some research on them. The major change is really with all of these combined, is that we still want to do a drug testing of all new hires, although only about 20% of the districts do that. I think it sends a message to the people we're hiring. You know, so we want to continue that. We're required by law and good practice that any workers' comp or any accident, you know, that we do the testing, we test all our bus drivers and all, but the random testing for our adults, we wanted to remove from the policy because it was some, one, it wasn't happening on a regular basis, two, as you look at many court rulings on it now, feel that if it's without some reasonable suspicion that it's invasive. And so we're making that recommendation on those changes, and that's really the changes in that wording. But the biggest thing that we looked at is we wanted to increase the number of students being tested. Reached out to a private company called the Weighted Recovery, which will come in and do our testing for us. We're increasing to 100% of all of our drivers, 100% of all of our teams, and our competitive extracurricular. And so that'll be about three to four times a year that I come in and do those, and 100% of our drivers' parking passes. Now, they all won't be duplicated, you know, they won't get it four times if they play three sports and drive. And then 25% of all of our students will go into a pool to be drawn out to be tested regularly. Our present policy says we're doing 10%, or it says 25%, but we weren't even getting 10%, honestly. And it was a lot because of discoordination, and it was a lot because of our nurses just weren't capable of managing, and so that's another reason we reached out to the Weighted Recovery. They will come in and manage that for us at a very reasonable price. So that's why we're kind of here now, is with this, a little earlier than usual policies, we want to be able to start this testing of all of our kiddos before school starts back, you know, in July. We want to be able to bring Weighted Recovery in to start doing that, and also the other new policies because we need to do that for all of it.
Do your, do the bus drivers, do they have to follow DOT?
Yes, ma'am. They are, in fact, this company, that's how I kind of got to them, are the ones that are already testing our bus drivers.
Then the second question is, when you're changing verbiage on the policy that is related to the staff, do you have them sign a new acknowledgement form? You need to do that.
Yes.
Yeah. Yeah, anytime you change verbiage in a policy, you got to have the enforcement.
And these changes will.
Otherwise, you can't hold them to it.
Yes, ma'am. And these changes will be, with your approval, sent to KSBA for them to make sure that, you know, there's no question in verbiage, and they'll send it back to us. But yes, we will definitely get this out to our.
Did you say that in court law, testing your older teachers is invasive?
It's, it depends on which court you want to talk about, but there's a bunch of court rulings. They've ruled, they've ruled both ways on it. But American Civil Liberties Unions against random drug testing on the grounds that random drug testing may also reveal extremely sensitive personal information, such as medical conditions, prescription, drug use, and so forth. There's a lot of recommendation not to do random, but we still have in there, and nothing taken out about if you have reasonable suspicion or you have any kind of accident. Even though, again, Dr. Orr and I talked about this, even though only about 23 of the 175, I think it is 74, districts do pre-employment testing, we both thought that we wanted to continue doing that because we're sending a message, I think, that's not welcome here.
That's right.
You know, but I feel very strongly that with our reasonable suspicion testing, with any post-accident testing, with our pre-employment testing, that we are well-covered for our adults, and that our concentration should be on taking care of our kids and making sure that we're keeping them as safe and healthy as we can.
Okay.
Do you not do reasonable suspicion training with?
The reasonable suspicion can only be done by this man or his appointee or whatever. And it clearly says that in our policy, that, you know, if you see these things, then with his permission, or, you know, then that person can be sent for testing. Once that I know of, as Assistant Principal here, we experienced that unfortunately one time, and first thing we did was phone call to Dr. Orr. You know, this is what we see, this is what the signs are, and that determination was made.
So then do you, at that point, go make an observation yourself, part two?
Or my designation?
Or your designation?
Yes, ma'am. Only Superintendent does any, make that final call on it.
And that's always a consultation.
Sure.
Doesn't happen?
Well, that's good.
Thank goodness, yeah. And also, I want to say that we don't think there's a huge problem with our kids, you know, either, why we want to increase to this level. But some concerns were brought to Dr. Orr, which he brought to me. And if you think about it, if we, you know, we have 600 or 700 kids in a building and we're doing 10%, that's a lot of kids never tested, you know, even if we're getting to the 10%. And so we really want the deterrent factor more than we're looking to catch somebody. And so that's why we wanted to ramp it up there a bunch.
Well, and then here's them two. And then if they venture into the next step, you know, which is, you know, the college and career, and they're, you know, getting employed with, you know, employers, they're going to do pre-employment drug testing as well.
Yes, ma'am.
Some don't, but a lot of them do. And so that prepares them that, hey, you know, this is just a part of life and just part of, part of the process, and yeah.
So I will be asking for a decision on approval of these at our next meeting?
So let me add on that. So we've got one new and seven that are existing, just updated language removed, add whatever it might be.
Correct.
So would this be the first reading of those?
It's the first reading on all of them, and the ones that say AP after the numerical designation are procedures, and so we could go with them now. I would wait, but they only require.
Sure, sure. So then that are, unless there are anything, any verbiage or concerns or questions we have that come up between now and then, whenever we see these on the third Tuesday, that will be the second reading, and they'll go into effect at that time.
Actually, I don't think we'll have them go into effect because we wouldn't.
Until July 1?
Start. It would be July 1. But what we will do is move.
It wouldn't require another.
We will move them into the consent section.
Got you.
Unless you guys have questions or concerns that we could put them back into the discussion section.
Got you.
Thank you, sir.
I think I'm up on the next.
Yes, and then next up is going to be our certified evaluation plan updates.
A bunch of changes are coming, but the Commissioner's recommendation, and what was kind of nice is we had already had looked at our 50-50 committee, and for once we've been on the board, well, know that we're required to have 50% teachers and 50% administrators review our certified evaluation plan each year. We had already, before a lot of these changes went into law, had reviewed it and said, we think we're in good shape, we don't need to change ours. Well, they have since come out, and you're going to give a lot more control back to the districts on evaluation plan, but one of the big things the Commissioner recommended is, don't change anything now. Wait until you get our guidance, wait till you get our interpretation on some of these laws. So really, we're bringing you the certified evaluation plan with no changes other than a few commas and periods and stuff went in, corrected a few little things like that, but no real changes to the evaluation plan this year.
And one thing I'll add to that is, just to maybe kind of flesh out a little bit of the thought, but then kind of tell you where I think we are and how that stands with other districts in the state. The legislation said we don't, the state doesn't mandate the evaluation plan, districts can adopt their own evaluation plan. What the state's going to do is say, you can adopt your own plan, but here are the regulations that it's going to have to meet. Every indication that we've had from the state up to this point is that the regulations are going to very closely match the Danielson framework for teaching that we've been using for the last several years. So we wait for that to be solidified before we even really review again. Now, it's possible there will be more wiggle room, but I think, when they come out with the regulations, but I think that wiggle room's not going to be about how you evaluate or what you evaluate about teacher practice, but more, maybe some wiggle room in the procedure itself, maybe making it a little more streamlined, but we'll have to wait to see. Most superintendents that I've spoken with, and even teachers and principals that I've had contact with, have said, we don't want to leave the Danielson framework. We like the evaluation system that we have. We think our conversations around instruction in the classroom are better than they were on the old system. So I don't expect, I haven't heard anybody say with any kind of authority that we're going to go back to the old way of doing things or come up with something completely different. But we'll keep you posted on that, but I thought it was thoughtful.
And most, I'm on a couple of email chats on that with HR directors and all throughout the state, and the majority, just as Dr. Orr spoke, are not changing anything. Or if they are, they're celebrating, they don't have to put it in the SIT system anymore, which is kind of a cumbersome system. We have the documents and stuff, or, you know, so there's a few happy folks about some of those little things, but overall, I haven't heard anybody says they're going to totally give up on the system because it is working, it is good. So that, I'll bring that to you for approval next meeting. No questions. All right. Thank you.
Next up, college and career readiness, math data.
Well, Bloomfield Elementary is up first, and if you'll notice as we go through the slides, if you'll focus on the blue and the green, the green is going to represent the proficient, and distinguished is going to be represented by the blue. But as you can see, 39.5 is proficient, and 18.4 is distinguished. This is good news. This is the math category at Bloomfield Elementary. This is up from the winter. Apprentice is down since winter, and overall, at Bloomfield Elementary, they only have 17 kids that are falling right in the novice range, so they're continuing with their interventions and strategies, and I think this is good news going into testing next week.
Is red the novice?
Red is the novice, yes, and yellow is apprentice. So moving on to reading for Bloomfield Elementary, 41% proficient, 21 distinguished. Once again, it's good news for Bloomfield Elementary. You can see their novice is at 10%. Distinguished is up. Once again, their apprentice number is down overall. Their novice is 17 overall as a school, and that's in grades three, four, and five. So they're holding their own. They're sort of excited. They only have two novice kids in fifth grade in reading. Fifth grade, I actually observed in the fifth grade reading class several times, and they're working very, very hard, especially on the novice. So they're very proud of their scores, and they're ready to attack the test next week. Bloomfield Middle, the first slide shows you their math scores. Proficiency is at 39.4%, and the distinguished is at 14.9. This is very good news because we've had a few staff changes there and a little rough patch in the fall semester. So I think all of that is smoothed out. I've been out there a couple of times this week and have checked on how progress is going there, especially in the eighth grade with the math class, and it's going very well. So as you see here, we have over 50% in math that are either proficient or distinguished. So that's very good news. We took a hit on, in Bloomfield, at Bloomfield Middle for the K-Pre last year, and so I'm very happy to see that their spring math is so strong going into next week as far as the testing for the next couple of weeks. In reading, you have also good news. 18.5% distinguished and 47.6% proficient. I attribute this, we have a very strong reading intervention program in the sixth grade there, dedicated time on a daily basis for all sixth graders so that they get a great start. We have also worked with some innovative strategies as far as the literacy design collaborative, and they've been working very hard on some of those projects. And so I think it's showing in these numbers. And so I think it's showing in these numbers that are so strong in the upper levels of the math assessment. I'm just really happy with Bloomfield and the way that they have turned around and are heading in the right direction.
That's two thirds of the students are meeting what the expectation is or better. I mean, am I looking at the numbers right there?
Boston, this is a combined graph both of elementary and middle for the proficient and distinguished. And I just want to, I'll note on elementary, the novice dropped for us and distinguished increased. So we were excited about that in math.
And I'll just tell you that the middle school is stellar, especially in math. The novice category in math in their middle school is two students. So we fluctuate back and forth in reading and math with one or two students that are in the novice category. So Boston has it going on. This is, single-digit novice is awesome. So good things are happening at Boston. On reading, again, it's a similar story to what you just saw. They're rocking in the middle school. Everything's going well. They have the advisory piece, they have the adventure piece, they have strong PLCs and a good work ethic between the team members. So the middle school kids are well taken care of, as well as the elementary. I'd just like to take the middle school more in love, you know.
For elementary in reading, we dropped our novice and apprentice and our distinguished increased from winter to spring, so we're excited about that.
Can you give us a status real quick, like on Boston and on Bloomfield Middle there? Again, the, just a quick look at the green and blue, the proficient and better, what we expect or better. Have we been hitting those two thirds, 66% and more in past years? I mean, I didn't think so. So there is something going on that, as you're saying, is very good, that these students are performing and learning at that level that we're asking them to.
I think it could be a couple of things. The one thing that we added this year was an extra suite of teaching tools and analysis pieces for the teachers so that they can use the math data a little more effectively and diagnose specific problems and then.
Focus on the students and the specific needs that they have.
Yes, and build their capacity. So I think that is one piece. Certainly, that's not the whole ballgame, but that, I think, is a big help that we added that piece. And we were very slow to do that because I don't want to change unless it's worth it. And so the instructional coaches worked on that for us for about six months and analyzed that and came back with a recommendation to Ms. Williams and I that that would be the way to go. And then we worked with NWEA throughout the summer to establish whether we needed, how we needed to go about that. We moved into that in the beginning of the fall semester, and Mr. Coffing is an integral player in that, in that he has to upload the rosters every time we test those students, and that's an arduous task. So it takes a whole committee of us, community of us to pull that off. But I think that's one piece that helped. Amory might have some other things that she thinks.
And I can't really speak for Bloomfield's schedule, but I can for Boston, that I think that they use their intervention time within their schedule very, they're very, it's very intensive, that they plan, they move kids, kids are in and out. Like if they need a specific skill, that they're in this group for this reason, and then they move on to another group when they need that. So I feel like their schedule has worked to their advantage with that. Okay, the next school is Cox's Creek. You can see 44% is proficient, 15 distinguished, they're holding strong. They took just a little dip from winter in math, but they only have two students overall in their school that are showing novice at the third grade level. So I feel very confident that they're ready for the test next week. Like I said, they're continuing with their intervention plan. They produced strong results last year, and I feel like they're ready for it this year. In reading, they have 40% proficient, 26% distinguished. Their novice decreased, distinguished increased, and they're single digits in the fifth grade in novice. So they're ready to go as far as reading is concerned in Cox's Creek, so. Foster Heights, I'm very excited there. They have 45% proficient, 9% distinguished. Their novice decreased, their distinguished did increase. They're going strong. They celebrated their K-Prep awards today. I know kids are excited, they're very pumped about the test next week, staff. There's a lot of buy-in, there's been a big culture change. So I really feel like they're ready and excited about the test, and so I feel like they're ready to go as well next week for the test. And moving on to reading, they have 39.3 proficient, 14% distinguished, a little bit stronger in the reading there in the distinguished category, but their novice decreased and so did their distinguished increase. So they're ready to go for the test next week in reading.
At Old Kentucky Home, in math, we have 36.2% proficient and 7.4% distinguished. We have worked with Advanced Kentucky and laying the foundations. We will seek their help again this year to strengthen the content knowledge for the teachers. We are looking to implement the Leadership Lab, that we replicate that experience from New Haven to Old Kentucky Home. And then I have a little middle school institute that I have done in previous positions. So I want to implement that, doing some PLC work with the teachers over the summer and in the early school year in August to cement and to establish exactly how middle school teams work together and how content teams work together and that sort of thing, because I think that's a piece that is missing at Old Kentucky Home. So those are some things that I'm planning for the fall to strengthen that school. But their, their math scores are solid in the proficient category. We have some distinguished, and we can always do better with apprentice. So that would be an area that we will work on, but overall, they're doing okay.
How did this compare with, it seemed like I had a memory of a brief look at how this compared to either where they were back in the fall and winter or how it compared to what they did with K-Prep last year? Am I making that up?
It's similar to K-Prep last year. We're on a flat line, and so we're going to have to do some strategies and some specific pieces. I'm not sure that we are getting the same use with our math interventions that we need. So that will also be something that we will look at, but we're just flatlining.
But to be transparent, given the conversations we've had over the last couple of weeks, I don't think I would have expected that we would be flat, so.
I mean, it's good.
I'm not going to cheer up about this.
Yes.
But I'm.
We've held our own.
It's better than the year that might have been.
Yes.
In reading, it gets better. So we have 44.1% that is, that are proficient and then 12.1 that are distinguished. They have used some project-based learning. They are in the collaborative that we're working with, project-based learning. We've just finished our first cohort, we will start a second one in June. They have been involved with LDC. We are going to work on higher-order questioning strategies. We have a new technology coach, digital learning coach, and so we will be working with the questioning pieces with OKH. And then we need to work on highly structured intervention. However, the reading is solid, it is, it's holding its own as well. It's a little stronger than math, but math is something that we still need to work on across the district. So it's no different for this school than it is any other school. But I'm okay with OKH because we are holding our own there.
New Haven, on the other hand, makes me smile very much. I was there with them today, and their kids are so eager, and their faces are bright, and they're smiling, and their eyes are sparkling, so we have 38.
Are you just talking about Ms. Norman?
Ms. Norman it was, too. 38.5% proficient, 10.0% distinguished, and novice is under 20% at all-grade levels.
At all-grade level.
Yeah.
All-grade level.
We've made some great strides there. It's the best scores that I've seen in the three years I've been in the district, and they have worked so hard. The teachers have worked hard, the administration has worked hard, the kids have worked hard, and they're all smiling, and so it was so much fun today to be there with them. I attribute it to the Leadership Lab, their PLC structure. We are feeding the teachers through the PLC structure, and it's working. We are supporting them, and I think that last one is one of Amory's, Leader and Me, so I'm going to leave that to her so she can talk about that. But you want to add your comments to the math piece?
Well, I just, there has been a complete culture change down there. I hope you can see it and feel it. It definitely was happening there today. I was also there today. I got to cheer a little bit with two groups. But academic coaching, kids are setting goals, they're excited, they're pumped, they're going to soar through the test next week. They're all about it. They know where they're going, they're excited to see their work publicized in the hallway. Like I said, fifth and sixth grade, I'm going to celebrate that with Kim. We got to split that just a little bit. But fifth and sixth grade, I think, if I'm not mistaken, in math, single digits, I think there's only five students, novice in math in fifth and sixth grade, and then three, four, I think it's like seven, and seven, eight, there's just like eight or nine. So we're just right there. I mean, a single digits novice is 20th percentile and below. I'm just super excited about that. So the math scores are really good, and we're just really proud to be going into the test with those scores, so. Super positive.
In reading, this is solid work. More than 50% of the students are in proficient and distinguished categories. Both novice and apprentice have decreased. They have worked very, very hard in reading, and they have worked very, very hard in writing. They've used them as a tag-team tandem to get some of these scores up. They have very high expectations, and you could see it in the kids' faces today. The kids expect themselves to do very well next week on K-Prep. The achievement coaching that has taken place this week, where the teachers and parents have worked one-on-one with the kids for them to set their goals for K-Prep, that's worked beautifully. And then I think the most important piece for the teachers is that we have been feeding them, instructional strategies and giving them ideas and supporting them through the PLC structure. So I think all of those things have worked together well, and I want to use some of the success that we have seen at New Haven and bring it over to OKH and to some of our other schools because we've learned something about Nelson County kids and Nelson County teachers and our school system as a whole. So we need to apply that to other places so that we get the same thing. But overall, I'm very pleased with our map data. I think we are in a good place for K-Prep. I think K-Prep looks bright. These scores have increased from fall and winter, and so I think everything is looking very bright.
Yes, this does make me smile. I really appreciate all yours hard work, most importantly, the teachers at New Haven and the staff that did this work. I'll remember the pressure and the fight as well.
I just want to point out on the reading there, it was just 21% at novice, and so they're excited about that, so it's just a little bit above the math. And the biggest thing that I see at New Haven is they're taking ownership of the learning, and they're taking ownership of the teaching and the instruction, and they've made it internal. And that's the part that's made the change, and so they're owning that.
Sounds like that strategy's needed over at OKH. Yes, ma'am.
I'm just going to point this out, may throw things at me, but I'm pretty quick at ducking. I think you're seeing a little more restraint, honestly, given the data, than we saw when we had this conversation last year because we were excited and we got disappointed. So I think you're seeing some restraint tonight. The data's encouraging. The proof comes over the course of the next couple of weeks when kids sit back down to do the state testing. But, so we're encouraged.
Cautional optimism.
Yeah, not to overplay that, but yeah, I would say that's true. So the kids, I saw as well when I was there today, the kids are on board and the teachers are on board. And that's something that is a shift there, and we're seeing that in several places. And we're going to see it in more places. I can tell you, that's what I'm getting excited about.
Thank you.
Thanks, ladies.
Next up is a work skills grant resolution. Mr. Dean, I think we had a, this is a decision.
I'll be asking for a decision tonight on this. There you'll have, there's a resolution for you and kind of a decision paper that goes with it. And it's really the decisions about whether or not we wish to participate in this new Skills for Youth initiative, which is a partnership between us and other interested parties like Washington County Chief for the development and funding of a regional career academy. So this involves several different working parts. We're in the process of gathering data right now and putting it together. So there's, this is before we begun building the grant, writing the grant, in case we wish to pursue it because, you know, deadline is always a fast approach. Anyway.
So I've given you all some information about this over the course of the last few weeks. We're really working on a planning grant right now, a little over $100,000 to look at possibility of a bigger project, maybe a regional career academy. So when we look in our region, we're specifically talking, and right now, I know us in Washington County and ECTC, Bartstown, Marion County may participate, but I haven't seen definitive information on that yet. But I know we're talking to them. And really, it's about responding to even in greater measure than we are already, responding to the healthcare demand and the advanced manufacturing demand in this region. But this is a combined forces kind of thing, so that we're involved in more partnerships, not just with the school districts, but the community college and the manufacturing. Our community has been incredibly supportive for the last several years, and they just, when we started talking to them about this grant, said, you tell us what you want, we'll sign off on it in terms of collaborating and getting partnerships established. And so, all of that looks good. I think this is going to be a really competitive grant. So we'll see whether we get to get involved with it or not. To be very honest, had a little trouble getting some momentum going behind it, but I think ultimately, we all didn't want to get in a situation where we were explaining why we didn't try. So we've pushed pretty hard and we've gotten some help, and so I think we'll get the grant in, and then we'll see how that goes after that. And if we get the planning grant, then I think that's going to generate some more enthusiasm versus really put together a good plan.
The new Skills for Youth initiative, what, I mean, what's that backing entity, I guess? I mean, is it a KDE grant? Is it another national organization grant? I'm just, I'm curious.
I will tell you, from what I see, the governor's office has really been pushing this hard. So you're looking at.
Workforce development.
Workforce development, pushing this money through. So KDE certainly supportive, and we're working with CTE as well. But this has really been a major emphasis of the governor's office since he came in, and certainly a driving force behind it is Hal Heider's decision. So this resolution, if you look at it, you're not committing to anything here that we're not already doing, other than that we will look at these regional partnerships to investigate the possibility of doing a regional career academy. So our kids will possibly travel if they want to, to have a broader opportunity at getting healthcare training or admitting to manufacturing. getting healthcare training or admitting to manufacturing. We're just looking at it at this point, we get into the planning grant, then we start bringing more specifics back about what the program would look like and how it would involve our kids.
What, since Washington County as of now is the other district that has said, "Hey, we have an interest too," are they also pursuing a resolution similar?
Yes. Yeah, this is in fact a requirement of grant application. So we would ask that if you understand what we're doing and are okay with it, if you go ahead and make a motion to approve this resolution.
Motion.
You have a motion for Mr. Jack? Second?
Second.
Mr. Norman, second, all in favor? Aye, and you oppose? This is awesome.
I figured that paragraph would wear you out reading it.
No, this is good stuff.
Thanks. We'll keep pushing along. Appreciate your time, so.
All right, and we've got the technology plan for 2017, 2018 from the office.
And this one better be good.
This is the last one.
Well...
What are you gonna do, fire him?
Send him to PDM. That's solid, UDM.
Oh, well done it.
Okay, so I was telling Jesse earlier that I'm afraid this one doesn't have, not gonna have quite the oomph that I would hope it for my last one, and he goes, "The power techniques are not working?" But anyway, it is a technology plan and it is, I'll show you some areas that we're doing well and some areas that we need to do some major improvements and we're gonna be working on that stuff. A lot of our information we have gained from, as I went over last year, a Clarity survey from Brightlights, it's been a company that's helped us a great deal in looking at really what we are effective at, not just with, not just in the technology department, but in the classroom with teachers and students in technology and how that works with their improved learning. And they've helped a great deal. Sometimes they point out things that we don't like to see, but that's really important to do that, to get that. So we'll move on to the next one. And the first action item that we're doing is that hiring of that digital learning coach. I cannot tell you how excited I am for this person that's gonna come online as our digital learning coach. She is bright, she's enthusiastic, she is knowledgeable, she is highly qualified and is most of all just excited to come do this. Her name is Jamie Chenault and she has, she has Google certi, Google education certifications in Level One and Level Two and in Trainer, and she's working on her Innovator. Those are the four that you can get as educators. That's awesome. She travels around to different Google summits and teaches and presents. She's presented at our State Technology Conference, she's presented at the International Technology Conference, and she will continue to do that. She has planned some of her vacations around her presentations in Indianapolis and other places, so she's excited about doing this sort of thing. Is this the one during the interview, that the presentation, the lesson that you asked each of the candidates to do, that you all forgot that you were interviewing her because it was such a good presentation she was having you all work on? Well, we had two of them like that. When I talked with you about that, there was one that it happened to, and it happened with this one also. So it was, it was very good.
It was that moment of, "Oh, wait a minute, we're interviewing this person."
Oh, wait, we're interviewing you, we're not just learning, we're interviewing you. Yes, it was good. As a matter of fact, I told this one, I had, that afternoon, I had one of my sessions here, and I told her, I said, "I'm gonna use some of this this afternoon, is that okay?" She goes, "Sure." So, pretty excited about that. Okay, our digital citizenship piece in our schools, I have been still struggling with this. Our schools kinda struggle with this, getting it implemented and really getting it off the ground. There are some school districts in the state who say, "If you don't finish a digital citizenship training program, then you don't get access to a computer." It's been awfully difficult for us to get to that point, I guess because we concentrate on so many other things, but now that we've got some of the infrastructure things out of the way and everything is pretty stable district-wide, we can really concentrate on more better stuff. I don't know how else to say it, except more exciting things, like getting the students to really pay attention to things like digital citizenship, e-commerce, online etiquette, being safe, security and passwords, on and on and on, knowing phishing emails that come out, et cetera, as a part of that. But I'll tell you, teachers are also in need of digital citizenship training because as we found out this year, and they've done very well at making good progress, as we intentionally were doing some phishing of our own employees, some of you may have been a part of that. It's been kind of fun, actually, for some.
Really, they come on, you're sending this one, really?
Yeah, we found out that through the year, several people who used to click on that sort of thing have stopped and they've learned that. And part of that process was, hopefully then...
Absolutely. Amen to that one.
Is there something that you need to confess back there, Ms. Hawkins?
Did you just say?
No, never.
I have not said who clicked on the emails that they shouldn't have clicked on. Haven't mentioned any of those people at all. Anyway, I think that as the teachers were getting that and maybe kinda getting caught at clicking where they shouldn't click, even though they've learned and whatever, the whole idea, part of that idea is then, "Oh, wait, my kids need to know this 'cause it caught me in it. Hey, guys, look at this." I'm not sure a whole lot of that has carried through yet, so we've got to be much more intentional with that. I really believe that with our new digital learning coach, that's gonna go a little bit easier. She is going to be able to pay more attention to that than pay attention to things like infrastructure and that sort of thing. I'm not trying to make excuses for my not getting it done yet, but I think we're gonna, we're structured so that it's, we can make better progress on that. Okay, the G Suite, gosh, that is just going great. In our G Suite, our teachers and students have created over nine hundred thousand documents since we started five years ago, six years ago. Over nine hundred thousand documents. That almost doubled from last year to this year. Okay? So, in this last year, they've done almost the same number of documents as they did in the previous five. That's crazy amount of, you know, exponential growth using G Suite, okay? It used to be called Google Apps for Education. I think that's a great thing because it's so easy to collaborate with each other in that, in that, in that format, and it's so easy to get people sort of on board and doing that, unless they've been entrenched in Microsoft Office for years and years, then it's a little harder to get things switched over. But the kids catch on to it fast. Again, they can collaborate with each other, with teachers, with other people, and share the learning, and it's a great way to do that. There have been over eight hundred thousand shares, okay? Now, only nine hundred thousand documents and eight hundred thousand shares, that doesn't mean almost all the documents have been shared. I have one document that I've shared with twenty people, that's twenty shares, okay? So, but there's a lot of collaboration going on. Teacher workstations, they are, we refreshed most of them about five years ago, so they're five-year-old computers now. Some of them are reaching their, towards the end of life, but we got an idea to refresh them by putting in a solid-state hard drive. And we did some experimenting and we put in a solid-state hard drive into some of the older machines and they were going as quick as our newer machines and as reliable and all that sort of thing. So, we tested several different levels, or several different models of machines with a new solid-state hard drive, and improved the speed of those machines so much that we decided to refresh all of our teacher machines, not with a brand-new machine, but with a new hard drive that will speed it up a lot. Some of those old hard drives are getting to the, to their max, they're low on drive space, and if they get too low on drive space, they go, and they quit. So, we think with this kind of refresh, that is about a third, well, not even a third of the cost of a new machine, a whole machine, we're gonna, we're gonna get another, at least, three years out of these machines, okay, at least. So we're excited about doing that this summer. Computer labs, they continue to hum along, those end computing workstations that we got five years ago. Some of them are starting to give out now, that's not bad, with a little machine that didn't cost a whole lot of money. They still are a fast alternative to a standalone machine that had, those standalone machines were getting old. However, there are some programs that just won't work on them anymore, anymore. As some programs become updated, they require more power and more resources of the computer and those little boxes hooked to one beefy desktop computer can't handle it, especially when you get to graphic design and video editing, which we have classes at both of our schools and that sort of thing. And so we have already purchased one lab of standalone machines for each high school that will run the Adobe Creative Cloud Suite very well, so that they can keep that going. At both of those places, they are, they're sort, they're, they're stuck in an older version of the Adobe Creative Cloud Suite, and if they, if we try to update, the whole thing just gives up and the whole lab quits. So we've had, we're having to upgrade those. The rest of the labs, we're trying to think about Chromebooks as a possible replacement in the future. I'm just talking about this, okay? We're not saying, "Okay, next year we're buying all Chromebooks and replacing all the computer labs with Chromebooks." That's not really what we're talking about, but it is such a more cost-effective way to deal with that than to replace those with individual standalone machines. Number one, because of the cost of a Chromebook at two hundred dollars, if you get that to last five years and the little, the little box with the licensing and all that stuff just a little over two hundred dollars, you get that to last five years, but it doesn't run everything that you need it to, so, I mean, there's a lot to weigh in there. So we've been talking about that possibility. Our schools have, okay, before we go to that one, Carla, thank you, the schools have about twenty-three hundred Chromebooks now and we're approaching, in some places, a one-to-one ratio. Not a typical one-to-one program where the kids take them home, because there are lots of problems there associated with taking them home. I'm not saying they can't be, those problems can't be surpassed, but not just the whole thing about, "Okay, the kid takes it home and it gets damaged, what are you gonna do with it?" I'm talking about when the kid brings it back and there are insects in it, what do you do with that then? Or if the kid brings it back and, I mean, the stuff's been spilled and, and just all kinds of problems with that. What if the kid doesn't bring it back? What do you do then? What about the kids that have free and reduced lunch? What do you do, et cetera, et cetera? We'd much rather have a one-to-one type program where students come into the school, they get their Chromebook, they have it for the school day, and they put it back in the charging car. Again, we're talking about approaching that. I know at Thomas Nelson, they're pretty much one-to-one like that right now, but I think they go into the classroom, grab a Chromebook, then put it back, go to the next classroom, grab a Chromebook, et cetera. And that starts to wear and tear on the Chromebooks themselves. I think if they have it, it's theirs and they keep it through the day, that might actually be a little bit easier on them, don't know. But we're certainly talking about that, okay? All right. Phone systems. Okanagan Middle School and Coxas Creek Elementary have phone systems that are, that are aging. They're aging enough that we have a very difficult time finding anybody who can work on them. As a matter of fact, for the one at Okanagan Middle School, there's a guy that we know that keeps a computer, it's a laptop, it's the only computer he has that still has Windows XP on it, but it never goes online, it's never patched or anything, has Windows XP because the program that can, that can make alterations to that phone system is on that Windows XP pro, on computer and it won't run on Windows Seven.
So you have to use those big quarter-inch jacks and headphones?
It's crazy. So, they're aging. We need to get them out of there because as they, as parts of them start giving up, which they're doing, we're having a very difficult time finding ways to replace those and get them repaired and serviced.
You know, have we gotten an estimate on the cost for those buildings to be upgraded?
Yes, we have a couple of different estimates, two different ways to upgrade them. Last year, we put in, in this last year, we put a hosted VoIP system at ATC as kind of a pilot to see how it would work. Once we got it installed and we helped AT&amp;T overcome some of their, gee, not sure how to do that part, that has been an extremely reliable system. So we've looked at the cost of that or at the cost of something that's similar to what we have in the rest of our school system right now. We also looked at the cost of putting exactly the same thing in OKH and Coxas Creek that we have in the whole school system, twice the cost of these other two possibilities, okay? So we're weighing these other two possibilities. It looks to Jesse and me like the best option is gonna go be with the hosted VoIP because included in the cost of a phone is their support, any long distance and that sort of thing, it's part of it, all of the different phone numbers and extensions and voicemail and all that sort of stuff, all, everything is included in the price of a phone, which is about seven dollars and twenty cents a month. And when you add that up, the per month cost is just very, very close. The hosted VoIP is, is almost two hundred dollars more than the other solution, but the other solution also doesn't include that big support piece that you've got with the whole rest of the school system. If we have hosted VoIP, they include support with that, the maintenance.
Which allows you to get out of the phone.
Allows you to get out of the phone.
In a way, you get out of phone business and you call someone and say it's broke, fix it.
Yeah, we got a new, we got a company that's new to us in this last year to monitor our current phone system in the rest of the school district, and that has been better than Windstream who installed it in the first place by a long shot. Anytime something goes wrong with our phones now, other than Coxas Creek and OKH, we get a phone call, it's middle of the night or whatever, we get a phone call and say, "Hey, did you know your phones are down?" "No, but I'm awake now." And they say, "Well, your phone's down, we've already called Windstream or we've already called AT&amp;T, they're working on the problem, just wanted to know." And there have been twice already that we get back in the next morning and it's all fixed, when normally, we would come in and wouldn't even know that maybe the phone's in some school to be down, and somebody would get ahold of us on a cell phone and say, "Hey, the phone's down," and we start scrambling and kids are there already, et cetera. So, for that kind of support in the workforce, it's been awesome. And with the hosted VoIP, we get a similar service to that, included in just the cost of the phone per month. So we're pretty excited about that. I talked more on that than I should have, sorry. Maintaining and upgrading what we have. Many of the systems that we maintain are sort of behind the scenes. I don't know if you've ever been downstairs and seen the server room and some of that stuff or whatever, but there's lots and lots of work that goes on behind the scenes. Getting, for instance, getting backup power on networks online. You know the backup batteries that you might have some computer equipment plugged into? Okay, so we've got those around the school district for many different systems, but they can be networked so that they can be controlled and we can get information from them centrally here. There's very few of them that are, okay? That's one of the things. Other things like updating software that runs everything is really, really important as things move forward. Student account management, data backup, data storage, the wireless, the new wireless system and the wired system, all that maintenance and system monitoring, all those updates and refresh. Obviously, we plan on continuing to maintain and update or upgrade those systems to do the best we can. do the, the best we can. Many of our things are moving to the cloud, which again takes some of the burden off of our tech department, which is just awesome. This summer, Infinite Campus is moving to the cloud. We could have chosen to keep Infinite Campus in our own server room, but it was going to cost us about triple what it's going to cost us to have it in the cloud. Duh, right? So it's going to go into cloud on June 7th. Many districts around the state have already moved, made that move. I wanted to do that in the summer so that it wouldn't disrupt things during our school year. We're also looking at moving Destiny to the cloud. Destiny is our library software where they check, got the books in, check out books, keep the inventory. There's lots of other things that kids can do in there. And we have had a server right here on premises that Jesse calls a public-facing server, which means that people from outside the district access that to get to Destiny and see the books and all that kind of stuff. It's a security risk for us. We don't do anything with that. It just sits there and it patches and hopefully it's getting all the security stuff it needs, but we don't know enough about that. So if we move that to the cloud, it's going to be much more secure than it is right now. Not that it's not secure now, but hackers are getting better and better. We saw an agreement today, somebody said, "Yes, we keep your data secure unless it's been hacked." What kind of, what kind of security is that? We guarantee your data is secure unless somebody hacks it. Then we don't have any liability here. So we're, we're looking at that, but anyway. Okay, I've taken a lot of time. You have the entire report in, in this thing. Oh, I'm sorry, I think, thank you, Carla, for doing, moving to that. That is an estimate. I got to tell you, working with Tim Hawkinsmith is fantastic because no matter what our budget says, when it gets right down to it, if we're saying, "Okay, look, I know our budget is saying this, but if we do this, on down the road, it's going to do this for us," and he's, he's always very willing to help us out that way. I have never gone to, I've never gone to him and said, "We really need this," and he said, "Well, you can't have it."
I'm not sure he wants that out there.
Well, but I also, I also have a little- Wait, what you do is you tell him his computer will stop working, so he pays for that budget. No, 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 no. But I think you just, I think you just trust Jesse and me enough that he knows that we're not going to come to him and ask for something unless we really, really need it. And, and there's lots of things that I don't come ask him about. I just say, "You know, we're not going to do that," to some people, and they don't necessarily like that, but I know that it's, it's more of a, "Oh, it'd be fun to have that," rather than, "We really need this for our instruction." There's a big difference. And so I kind of put the brakes on several things that way and several times a year, but when I come to Tim with something where it makes sense and it's easy to say, "We really need this," he's pretty much, "Yeah, we should, I think we might be able to do that, but what if," you know? And so we kind of negotiate, but he's, he's fantastic to work with.
Well, I think technology is one of those areas that we're always going to have to spend money on just because it's constantly changing and, you know, and constantly getting better and we have to stay better with it. It's just one of those areas.
I have to tell you-
That to me doesn't look bad at all.
Well, that's a lot less than it was last year because of the wireless upgrade last year. But I've got to tell you that, you know, when we brought Jesse on five years ago and he was, he started saying, "You do what? And your infrastructure, you don't have this and we can't monitor that?" And we started monitoring things and making changes and virtualizing some of our servers and just making good sense moves, that we now finally have an infrastructure in place that is reliable and stable and we can do some really neat, finally, we can do some really neat things with it within our school systems. And it's just really exciting what could happen in the future. We couldn't have, we couldn't have hoped for thinking about one-to-one with infrastructure even though we had just last year. That couldn't have happened with our wireless. Couldn't have.
And you're leaving. And you're leaving, so.
Yeah, yeah.
After all that excitement.
After all that excitement. It's, it's, I mean, to me, from my perspective, my pain job, it's interesting watching Jesse and Dave and just the district itself compared to other districts in central Kentucky. There's a lot of folks that have looked at these two guys, asking questions, looking for, "How are you doing things?" So we have, with all the ribbing about Indiana and such, we've, we've been pretty lucky here in Nelson County to have that opportunity for both Dave and Jesse to be here. He would have been here tonight, but I had told, several months ago, I had told him it was okay for him to be gone starting this afternoon until Monday, so they are on a little short vacation, so.
That was nice of you. You're a good boss.
Now, what do you do to his desk while he's gone? I have, I will not do anything to his desk or anything. I, oh, well, not. I may throw something at him when he comes back, but I'm not going to play any practical jokes on Jesse. You'll keep him.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
So next is our-
Yes.
Student stakeholder engagement, yes, comments. Do I have to read all about?
Nope.
All right.
Nobody left here.
Mojen. Second, all in favor? I'm sitting close. All right, sir.
Thank you all.